Okay, are we ready? All right. Thank you, Alyssa. Hi, everybody. It is August 6th. This is our work session, Budget 2021. Looks like is everybody, Tony said that he wouldn't be here until later. Steve is traveling and he's having some connectivity, availability issues. So he said he would definitely be here in time, if not before the six o'clock meeting, he'll be here by the six o'clock meeting. I think Tony's going to be here in about a half hour or so. So with that, let's kick off the work session. Budget, fun stuff. Who do we have?
Steve, you're muted. I know you don't look muted.
Your volume maybe on your computer? I think he's just messing with us.
Yeah. It's part of the report right now.
I'm thinking maybe Alyssa, Catherine sometimes has this problem. Maybe we should restart your computer?
Oh, you have Alyssa.
Oh, that's, that's nice.
I'm saying help. Shelley joining us, Jonathan, do you know?
Yeah, she is. I just don't see her.
No.
She had indicated that she would. Let me text her. I think she just tried to call me. Hold on.
Jonathan, I think she needs to be promoted.
Oh.
He's in the attendees.
There she is.
I'll be right back.
I don't understand why my link brings me in as an attendee sometimes and not. I don't, I don't know if I'm hitting the wrong link, but it's the link that comes in my calendar. So we could fix that some way.
It is because you're clicking the one that comes on the calendar. You should have gotten, I think, a separate email that has the panelist link in it.
Okay. Okay.
We didn't want you to meet. We didn't want you to the meeting. We did it.
I would just expect my calendar invite to have the right link, but maybe not.
Shelley, it does. Mine does. I think sometimes it's just glitchy.
Okay, okay.
I think they just like you, Deborah, because mine doesn't. How are we doing, Steve?
It helps to be the boss.
Right.
I was gonna say, maybe that's it. It's just, you know.
So that is not a quick to fix problem. Steve is going to share his screen and then if Kassana would like to start, she can do that.
Okay. I'm just, I am unmuted, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just gonna go give an overview of the memo. We did, the Financial Advisory Board did meet to go through the budget information that you guys are working on tonight. And like we have done for the past several years, we put together a memo with our recommendations. Most of them are fairly comparable to the prior years. There are a few that are more directly related to the financial situation that we find ourselves in because of the pandemic. So the biggest one there would be with the revenue impact. There's a lot of discussion, particularly with those on our committee who are business owners and what they're looking at. We did do recommend at this point that we look at forecasting a decrease in sales and use tax revenues somewhere between 10 and 15% for the coming year. With staffing, it's not a great year to look at raises. So we would recommend that you prioritize maintaining the full-time staff that you have. And the Rural Fire Protection District, we recommend, consistent with what staff was thinking, that the allocation of the property taxes be changed from the 3.5 mils to the 2.5 mils going into the Equipment Replacement Fund and then use that additional one mil for operating costs. As far as the, you scroll that up a little bit, Steve? Thank you. As far as the, the general fund, in the past, we have recommended that we keep a, an unassigned balance of about 25% with the realities of the financial situation. Right now, we're recommending 20%. We are also willing to evaluate the results of the water and electric rate studies and work with the council to help design an appropriate rate structure. I believe that a study was done several years ago that maybe recommended some increases that didn't happen. So just getting those rates in line with where they should be is probably going to be helpful. The tax revenues from the marijuana and tobacco funds, at this point, we would recommend that the, that council prioritize the transfer of the funds to the general fund. Again, just given the current financial situation. And we would also recommend unassigned reserves of at least two and a half million in the A and I and one and a half million in capital projects. We would also recommend keeping at least 100,000 in the A and I and capital projects fund as a contingency for projects that might come up or need change over, change orders to go over budget. The, the increase in the interfund cost of service, this is pretty much consistent with what's been done in past years. We just recommend using the 2% increase that's been traditionally done. At some point, we may want to think about doing a little more analysis to see if that is an accurate rate increase based on the actual costs of providing those services. But that's going to be a pretty significant amount of work. So it's not something that the Financial Advisory Board would recommend at this point. And as we usually do, we would also discourage the lending of money between funds. Not a great accounting idea. And then finally, we, given everything that's going on this year, we would recommend that the council consider the impact on staff on the big projects. And just kind of try to focus as much as possible on what actually needs to be done rather than all the nice to have projects with the impact that all this is having on staff right now and the reduction in revenue that the city is likely to realize in the next year. And that's really, those, that pretty much sums up what our discussion was. Staff did a really good job of walking us through everything that I'm sure they're going to walk you through tonight as well. And so just want to say, we, we appreciated being able to be part of that project and, and all the work they put in.
Thanks, Kassana. I think we have Steve Boyd back. See if there are anything else you want to add or augment to that?
Nope. Hi, everybody. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Sorry about that. I don't know what kind of technical issues we're having, but some. No, there's not anything else that I wanted to say. I just wanted to let everybody know that we are, you know, we've got public works budgets that we're kind of starting off with. So I'm going to turn it over to Professor Langhorst here in a second. He can kind of go through his stuff. At the end, we've got a couple of funds, tobacco and marijuana that are just kind of pass-through funds. And then we've got the Vale Fund because we want to be able to check that box. Those are three funds where there's just really nothing that's happening, so to speak. You know, we'll talk about how we're going to spend the marijuana tax and tobacco tax dollars when we get to the general fund budget in the first meeting in September. So if Matt kind of takes over when you guys have questions about his budgets and stuff, and we don't get back to any of those, I think it's fine. We can pick those up as we go along. So thank you, guys, everybody. Matt, I'll turn it over to you if you want to try to share your screen and, and you can take it away.
All right. Hold on, I got like four screens up at this moment. So at least we pick one. I can share with you guys. Share screen. Can everyone see screen number two? It's basically the packet just brought up. I'm just going to kind of roll through each sheet in the packet. Is, is that okay? Can you guys see it? I need to make it bigger.
Yes, Matt, can you make it bigger, please? Zoom in a little bit.
How's that? More?
Little bit more.
One more.
That's probably good.
Good?
Good.
Charlie, can, are you good? Good.
All right. Let me flip through a couple of things here and get this ready. All right. So the street tax fund. What we're projecting for this coming 2021 year is exactly what's on the set is we're going to go down 10% because you'll see 2020 budgets, 2554. 2021 is 2299. If you remember, we went over the COVID budget in, in March, April, May. I don't even remember when it was, to be honest with you. And that 2554, we really knocked it down to about 175, I think it was, 178 in that realm. So in 2020, we actually negated quite a few little projects. ERP helped out a little bit with some budgeting. But we basically tried to get the big projects we had done are online, which was the Mill and Overlay at Midland. You know, Cedar Crest, 29th Street Projects, those kinds of things we stuck with. But we tried to knock out some small projects to stay under budget. I think we're doing a little better in taxes than we had projected, but that's good. That'll go into revenue or reserves for next year. But hopping into 2021, you'll see revenues are about 2409 here. And sorry, we did this with Fab the other day and it took me an hour and a half to go through these. So I'm going to talk a little faster. Stop me with questions. What we're looking at is some, some medium-sized projects next year. We will not be able to afford a Cedar Crest again. This year, we ate into the street tax reserves. I'd say about a million dollars. I think Steve and I kind of agreed, we have about a million dollars left in reserves in the street tax at the end of this year, which is about where we want them to be. I don't think we'd want to go much lower than that. So for this current 2021 budget, we're not projecting to spend any of those revenue or those reserves. We're just trying to stick with the budget as presented with the 10% drop. So projects would be Red Mountain South, which would be Riverview and 11th Street. We're going to sit down with SGM next Friday, who's doing the design on that and try to break that project into two, hopefully just two phases. It is a water, a sewer, a broadband, roadway drainage. It's a pretty significant project. It's in the same realm of Cedar Crest. The Cedar Crest cost us about $4 million to accomplish, a little over $4 million for some change orders and things. So 750 is not a huge number, but when we get to water and sewer, you'll see that they have money being thrown into about a half a million dollars apiece for the projects. We'll have almost $2 million, you know, 175 next year to try to accomplish as big a chunk of Red Mountain South as possible. I know that we were looking at Red Mountain North Engineering has that design. That section of the world is not, is in bad a shape as Red Mountain South is. Thanks to Black Hills, they did some work. Some of the asphalt's cleaned up thanks to a raw water line exploding and us having to fix a little bit of road this year. And a few other things, actually, that world is, is not in terrible shape. The water and sewer are sustainable. So we're kind of looking at Red Mountain South as our next big project. Right below that, you'll see miscellaneous storm repairs, concrete work and asphalt work along Blake Avenue between 24th Street and Highway 82. And that is all lumped together into a $200,000 number because I don't know what's going to transcend or come through with this Bell Rippey project. We have two sections of storm sewer out there in that area, 24th Street to 82, that don't actually hook to anything or themselves. So we'd like to fix that this coming year. So our storm sewer actually functions correctly. And then there's money in here. So if we needed to figure out how to call it scrape Blake Avenue from 24th to 26th Street and put some new asphalt in, we could probably accomplish that. But with Bell Rippey kind of floating out there, and I'm not exactly knowing what we're going to do with Blake. We're trying to put some money in there to do something on Blake between the 24th Street and back, the word ties back into 82. There's a lot of work that needs to be done in that area. This won't cover all of it. So we'll have to be kind of nitpicky about what we get done for next year.
That's just Charlie. On that, and I think I remember this from the FAB meeting, but that doesn't include the reopening of the gate that we're trying to do this year, correct?
That does not include the reopening of the gate that is trying to be accomplished this year. No.
Okay. So Matt, you said that was, this is Rick, 200,000 that we're going to be able to dedicate between 23rd and 26th or 24th and 26th, brother?
So it's basically 24th all the way over to Highway 82, right by McDonald's. I know that's a very large stretch. I don't know what we're going to do in that area. I've got a whole list of things from repairing the asphalt in front of Walmart where we know it's terrible, putting some concrete pads down at the 82 connection, putting some concrete pads in for the bus stops that the bus is kind of wrecked the asphalt when they, they park. We've got a bunch of drainage fixes to do. I mean, basically from 23rd Street all the way back to Highway 82, it's kind of a mess. The section from 27th Street to 82 is a little bit more of a mess because it's the original thin wall steel pipe that's out there. We're actually going out and pothole in all the existing piping to make sure we know exactly what it is. But 23rd to, sorry, 23rd to 27th Street, we know that was replaced in the 90s. 27th Street all the way to 82, it's probably still the old thin wall steel pipe. So we don't want to repair a road over or something that has a bad pipe underneath of it. So it's kind of a lumped together number until we really kind of come up with a plan based on information from Bell Rippey, based on information from the community out there and based on some more water line data. That's why it's just kind of a generic number. I could spend, I could spend a half a million or probably $750,000 out there pretty quickly. But we don't want to do that all at once and we want to make sure what we're doing is right.
And Matt, you know, it, not to mess up priorities, but you know, I know the Red Mountain South, I believe, has, I mean, that's been on the books for a long time. And I know it's a high priority, but it's been the high priority for a number of years. I just wonder, you know, Bell Rippey is kind of the star of the stirrers that drink out on 24th to 26th and down Blake. Was there any conversation about potentially, hey, maybe things are a little bit better. Maybe we can do Red Mountain, but maybe we want to dedicate some resources, kick Red Mountain down the, the can down the road for another year. But get basically Blake done and done right. Is that, I mean, it seems like we got a lot of stuff coming at us with the Bell Rippey Development Project in Blake Gate. Have you had any conversations about that?
So we'd be way behind the eight ball at this point for that kind of a conversation. We don't have any designs. I only have survey for a certain area. I don't know what the water lines are. You know, I can't just rip something back out, something out and put it back in. It's not that easy. We need to sit down with an engineer, get things surveyed, get things designed. Where are my water lines going to go if we put a new one in so everything can still function? How does the drainage work? Do we need to improve the drainage? So the problem is, is you can't just take a project and go, I'm going to do that next year. You have to start the year before, basically, to figure out if it's a big project, how I'm going to move forward with it the next year. And I think the Bell Rippey projects, yeah, I mean, they're going to be building for a while. Even if they get kicked off this year, it's going to probably wait into 2021, if not 2022, by the time they have everything built out, not knowing exactly what the schedule is. I'm just anticipating that. So maybe in 2022, we budget for some more work out there, actually get ahead of the designs, get ahead of the budgeting and try to finish up some, some pieces out there for 2022 budget. I'm not saying we can't switch things around, but we're, we're a little behind on design and actually be able to budget anything out there. And we, I think we're in conversations with the Bell Rippey people on how much they're anticipating being fixing on Blake Avenue within their project because kind of looks to me like they're fixing a good portion of Blake right there by the entrance. So yes and no. Red Mountain is in some pretty bad shape. I don't know when last time you were over there is, but the water line's really bad. The sewer is bad. The storm sewer is bad. The roads are bad. You know, it's just something that I'd rather kick Red Mountain North kind of down the road a little bit. Don't tell my neighbors I said that because that's where I live. I'd rather work on Red Mountain South and I'd rather work on Blake. I'd rather work on 23rd Street. I'd rather work on 21st Street. I mean, there is a pile. And we are compiling a quite a extensive list to start working on while we still have this street tax and see what we can get knocked out.
Jonathan, I remember that we had discussions that fire up on walls or somewhere and we're worried about being able to get fire protection of water to put the fire out. So that's, that's that south Red Mountain area. So I think that's, life safety issues are pretty critical.
Yeah, fair enough. Thanks, Matt.
Moving to the next section, the 13253. These are the things that we do pull out of here for just, not just, but for maintenance of the streets, which is the D I C R, traffic control devices, patching. I think we might always have as much as you could this year just to get the product as possible. Snowplowings out of here, that Gould contract that we have. Sustainable strategies here, they help us with all the grants, the $7 million itself. They just with the recycle center grant. So they're worth a way. That goes to the same things like the D E A, principal funds. And different costs of service kind of wraps out the rest of what's being that routine maintenance up here is just broken out into these details down below. So basically, we're looking at 2.45. I think the budget was 2405. So we're a little bit over by like $45,000. Things that have tendency not to get spent is the traffic coming program. I don't know if we spent any two years, that's $50,000. State for schools, we try to spend that money, but we have to plan ahead for that. And then we bumped up the right-of-way concrete repair and sidewalk panel repairs. We've got a lot of concrete issues within the city and we need money. We do all the work in-house. I have money to buy the concrete. So that's kind of where these numbers, if you can see my curves here, I come from. And that's why they're in there. So any questions on this one? We have 78. We've got some roads we want to crack ceiling on and maybe one or two we want to chip still next year also.
I don't want to complain, but we're having, I'm having trouble understanding Matt. He's cutting it out.
Yes, I am also.
Do I need to be closer?
That's better.
How's that?
Audio.
That worked.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. But basically, this is the end of it. Street tax is not a very long tax, not a very long spreadsheet. Basically, you have revenue up top and then these two sheets of what we're spending everything on.
So Matt, this, this budget at the two, what was that bottom line number, 2 million something?
2.4.
That will keep us without dipping into reserves next year.
That is the intent. If, if, if we drop the 10%, then yes, we would not dip in his reserves. If we drop more than a 10%, we would try to rearrange even the budget internally like we did for COVID. If we make more than that, then there'll be some put into reserves. Or if we know, then we can maybe make some adjustments and hit something towards the end of the year if we feel comfortable with it.
Okay. Are there any monies left in there for, say, any minor emergencies like a water line breaking and having to repair streets or?
So not, I mean, the million dollars in reserves will still be sitting there. A million, million one in reserves is still sitting there for those kinds of things. That's why we don't ever want to kind of drop below that number.
Matt, can you scroll down a page? I think that shows some of what Shaz is asking.
Okay. So that available reserves is that, that's that 10%, the 584063.
So.
At the end of 2021.
That is the, what is the Spring Ridge traffic fee, Steve? The reserves that I have for 2021 basically is the 884 right here. We'll probably be a little better than that because we haven't hit our really bad number for the year. Which is why I'm saying it's probably going to be about a mil, mil one. I don't know what the Spring Ridge traffic fees and why it's a negative and the developer contributions are a negative. I don't, I don't know. I haven't seen that one before. I don't understand that.
Yeah.
I don't know where Steve went either, but Spring Ridge traffic fees are usually a positive and developer contributions are usually a positive. So that I don't have an answer for, Shelley, sorry.
Right. Okay. Yeah, it seems like that should add to the available funds, but.
The number I.
Correct me if I'm wrong, when he can talk, but I'm assuming what that is is they are restricted. So they're there. So he usually tries to tell you what you can spend.
Right. Okay. So what's available? Yeah. What's unrestricted reserves? Okay.
Can, can you just explain what is the Spring Ridge traffic fee? Does anybody, can anybody address that? Just, I don't know what that is. So.
I'm going with, and Steve, give me a thumbs up. If I'm correct, it is a fees from a developer for when a Spring Ridge development was built.
Okay. That's correct. Pre-annexation agreement included a number of items including that. But to be assessed over time.
And where is Spring Ridge?
It is, it's the sewer line that we, we went up four mile with. They
Okay.
That's two force mains, two smaller four or five inch force mains, I believe.
Okay. Cause I was going to say, I thought that was well outside of the city, but there, that is the one that's up four mile.
It is the one that's up four mile. And we did, as part of that agreement to provide sewer service weeks. We agreed to a number of other fees related to the development.
Okay.
Because we could.
So Matt, you know, if I can, just real quick, I'd like counsel to zero in on this too. That in 2019, we had 2.1 million dollars, which was our ending balance. And in 2020, 884. And this is looking, you know, somewhere in the range of 842 for 2021. So we are going to be, if we talk about big infrastructure items tonight, I think we need to bear in mind that we've been we are going to be, if we talk about big infrastructure items tonight, I think we need to bear in mind that we've been chipping away pretty steadily at what is variously called in this presentation, available reserves. And there's another word I think that we're using too, uh, unassigned budget. So we just, hopefully a not too gratuitous comment, but you know, we can't keep doing this, I don't think.
No, Rick, that's, that's one hundred percent correct. You know, we did Cedar Crest this year. We did it as a big lump project. We got the cost savings that we were anticipating by doing it all at once. And the neighborhood's been very nice about us doing that because it's extremely disruptive to their lives. But it was kind of a one-shot deal because you can see the reserves have gone from the two down to, we'll call it eight eighty four. Probably more like a million dollars by the end of the year. What's restricted and what's not is obviously a little bit of a conversation, but at the end of the day, we don't have huge amounts of street tax funds and reserves sitting around for us to start throwing everywhere, or I'd already been throwing it everywhere, as you guys probably know. Because I like to fix streets. So it's kind of a thing. But we don't have that kind of money. So it just is what it is. We got one really big project that's been on the books, at least in the water sewer in the, in the street department's minds. It's been on the books for quite a while. We've get that, we're getting that done. We should be done here in the next thirty to forty five days with that project. And with some minor little tweaks, it's been extremely successful, I think. So I'd love to do that every single year, but that's, we can't. That's why we're doing a phase one and we may have to do a phase two, maybe even a phase three to get some of these other subdivisions that are kind of sitting in the same state done. Because there's only about a million dollars. You saw we're spending nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars between those two projects. On a good year, that had been one point two million dollars to spend on just call it complete repair street projects, but the number I threw at you guys last year or the year before was in the realm of, you know, thirty million. So, and that's just the street portion of it all. So we're never going to get there. I'm just chipping away as much as we possibly can with what we have. And sometimes you have to leave it a little ambiguous on what that project's going to be, like the Blake Avenue, two hundred thousand dollars. I don't know what that project's going to be. It's going to be something between here and here, depending on what falls together within the world of Bell Rippey and everything else over there. So I know it needs to be done. Twenty third Street should be done at the same time as Blake Avenue. Twenty fourth Street should probably be fixed. But we don't have enough money to do it all at one time.
Yeah, and I don't think the public really kind of understands those dynamics. I mean, you know, I see a lot of comments about why are we spending money here when the streets are in such a bad shape and you know, I don't know if there's a strategy, a communication strategy that council can create that would sort of get out ahead of some of this and just to show people that, you know, it's complicated. But here's where your street fund is. And if you want more money for streets, suggest where we can find it.
And I think we're going to have that conversation on the agenda this evening to have a little bit more, more in depth. Deborah, you had a question or a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that even though it's not Matt's budget, and this could be confusing for people as well, you know, South Midland reconstruction will have a huge number in the A and I budget and will be a very large street construction project, which is great, but will probably also help lead to the confusion of how are they doing that street? And you can't count on build grants every year.
But I think the other thing Deborah, that Rick pointed out, I think is important. John, I, John, I know we're talking about later, but you know, this idea of where money comes from, what funds, like the South Midland comes out of A and I because that was part of the A and I fund approval. So this is where people don't really understand these interrelationship of funds. It's very difficult.
Right.
Yeah, and, and if folks could just raise their hand, Tony has joined us just to acknowledge that he's now with us and he has his hand up. So I'd like to acknowledge Tony. Tony, did you raise your hand for? Yeah, okay, never mind.
He could be on his phone.
No, I see him. Sounds like he's trying to talk. He says hello. He's present. He just wants us to know. We should get along with things. And he completely agrees that we don't have any money for the streets and that there's no way that we'll be able to do this without a new tax, right, Tony? All right. All right, go ahead, Matthew.
Are there any other kind of questions on the street tax fund? You know, we're going to do some projects next year. Deborah is one hundred percent correct. I mean, there's going to be twelve million dollars basically heading towards South Midland to get that massive project done, which is also a water project, a broadband project, an electric improvement project. It's not just a, a street improvement project. It's, it's a huge piece of infrastructure for us and in the goal of moving towards South Bridge and getting, you know, the traffic to flow that direction. So that is definitely a project that will be happening, I, I believe, next year from what I hear. And it will be a substantial amount of funds. Guys, ready to move on to water wastewater?
Absolutely. Keep it rolling.
So water wastewater, water sanitation charges, service fees, charges for service fees, all those fun things. All basically sits in this one little page right here. So projected next year is exactly the same as this year. We didn't reduce it ten percent. It is an enterprise fund. It's not a tax. We just left it straight across the board from this year. So far this year through June, I don't have July's numbers in as of yet. We're down about one point four percent from twenty nineteen when it came to revenues. And in twenty nineteen was a really good year. You can see projections twenty nineteen was actually higher than twenty twenty. It didn't quite reach them, so we bumped twenty twenty down just a little bit, but that's why we're kind of just transferring straight across. It's an enterprise fund. It's based on sales of water. Water sales so far this year have been pretty good. I think everyone's been staying home and they've been watering the yards and having a great time. But we're not down a whole lot in that fund as we were anticipating to be. So, you know, we're six point four seven three and that's water.
Hey Matt, you're, you're breaking up a little bit again.
Breaking up again. You were just breaking up that time.
I know.
The internet.
Now you're good.
I'll try, I'll try to talk a little slower. Maybe it's not helpful. Any revenue, six, four, seven, three. There are many, many pages of the water funds. A lot of its operations and maintenance. It gets pretty detailed when we go farther down. Pumps here, chlorine there, chemicals here, those kinds of fun things. It's routine maintenance, things that we do from year to year. Sometimes they change. Sometimes it's a pump in this building versus that building, but it's routine maintenance. So I'll try to stick to the bigger things. You know, we have a transfer for the ERP. We help pay for that. The projects in the water list for next year is Highland Tanks Rockfall mitigation. That one's been on the books for two years now. We'd like to get it done next year. It's just slope stabilization behind the tanks. We don't want your rocks come down and take the tank out. Cardiff Tank number two, we have the design going this year and we'll get it permitted through C D P H E. If you can't hear me, let me know sooner. But we'd like to build that tank next year. That tank would most likely come out of system improvement fees, which are a restricted fund. I believe that's about three point eight million in it right now, which is things to be spent. And if that's going to look up the language for me, so I'm legally okay with it and Carl can chime in, but I think we can build a tank with system improvement fees because it is a major system improvement down in the south end of town.
And Matt, Matt, not to interrupt, but we have three hands up, so might say not to interrupt, but I mean, we're going to interrupt. Sorry. Yes, we got, we got Charlie, Tony, and then Shelley in that order. Go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, just a, a quick thing, more accommodating than the else because it came up in F A B again. And Matt, just if I have this wrong, please clarify for me, but we're in a study, a rate study for water, which may change our revenue picture in two thousand and eleven, two thousand twenty one, excuse me, depending on when we get that completed. Is that correct?
We are in the middle of a rate study. We've started to get numbers back from the consultants at this point on we gave them the grand capital list of what we'd like to do in the next ten years and you're not going to like the percent increase to accommodate for that. So we're scaling it back a little bit, but yes, there is a rate study. We will be bringing it to you and Fab. There will be several options to look at. To try to decide where we want to go with it, but twenty twenty one is probably going to be a hard year for everybody coming hopefully out of COVID. We'll have to decide what we want to do to start increasing funds a little bit. The water wastewater used to receive money from capital and then that got knocked down, knocked down, knocked down even more till it's zero right now. So the problem with the fund, as you'll see here in a minute, is that every time we do a certain amount of work with these projects, we basically just start eating into reserves. So the question is, is how low can we bring those reserves that we feel comfortable with? We can bring them lower than we have them sitting now. But at some point, we have to be able to pay for these projects without eating into reserves every single time. So that's where the rate study comes into.
All right, Tony.
Can you hear me now, Mr. Mayor?
I can fantastically. Thank you for allowing me to have a little bit of fun at your expense, Tony.
We approved this group tax while I was muted, right?
That's right. It's on the ballot.
Well, I just had a question about the agenda really with regards to infrastructure. You have optimistically placed that at nine forty. You think we're going to have to continue that tonight, as you mentioned, Dave?
You know, I hope not. But, you know, I, I, I think we are having kind of a, a somewhat de facto infrastructure conversation right now. And if we're able to continue it at nine forty, great. And if not, let's pick it up in two weeks because I'm sure there'll be more information about it. And we will make sure we put that earlier on the agenda. We just have a lot of public tonight with the riparian zone. We have to get through that. So I, I'll, I'll commit Tony to getting that earlier on the agenda if we don't get to it tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Sure, go ahead, Shelley.
Hi, Matt. Thanks. Just a question on future planning for our water supply. We had talked a couple of years back, especially in twenty eighteen when we had the drought and No Name Creek was this close to drying up. We talked about doing some planning at that time for longer term water supply, drought, resilience and that kind of thing. I'm just wondering where that is in, in the plan nowadays.
So it's part of the, we'll call it the capital improvements projects that we sent to the consultants to kind of look at if we could fund some things. There's a lot of things we could do to help ourselves with water. One is we're looking at the raw water pump station that was put in for Park West. It had too much salinity in it. We couldn't use it, but that would really help us if we could to balance out these Cardiff tanks that we always have problems with. So we, we literally met on site this morning, to be honest with you, and we're starting to ponder how we can potentially get that thing up and running. Make it better, remove the salinity so it could be used for raw water, which is basically irrigation water.
Right.
Which would help with not pulling domestic water out of the tanks. Or Cardiff for Park West for the ball fields over there. It's a huge amount of water, actually, we could use to supplement. So that could be a small investment. I mean, small, you know, in the hundreds of thousands instead of the millions to help us balance out at least South Glenwood water consumption because that water is domestic water right now being used. If we didn't have to pull that out of the creek and treat it and just use it straight out of the Roanoke River, it saves us money. So.
Right.
Answer number one, and I have probably ten answers for you, which is why it's an interesting, maybe, infrastructure conversation. Because there's, we have conversations every day and every week about how long is the water treatment plant going to function for us? It was built in nineteen seventy seven. The filters sometime are going to be deregulated. We don't have a clear well in front of it, so how we treat and chlorinate across the process is, is okay by C D P H E, but someday it won't be. You know, are we, is that raw water coming in going to be enough for the future? Do we need to build a new plant on the north side and pull out of the Colorado where we can probably transfer rights to? I mean, it's, it's a, it's an interesting conversation that we should all have and Carl should chime in on because he knows all the water rights and legalities of it all. But it's planning we need to do basically in the next five to probably eight years. But we need to have something rolling probably in the next ten or fifteen.
Okay, I guess I'd like to see us and maybe the rest of council can chime in. I just would like to see us have a good plan in place going forward and I, I see the need for that. And I guess Aspen is in the process of doing that right now, or at least doing some kind of long-term drought planning. So I would certainly be in favor of that, just if you can, if we can fit it in one of these years, just a good plan, a good robust planning process for our future of our water supply.
We sit in a great place. We have quite a bit of water rights. It's how to combine them all into one spot and figure out how to best use them without transferring them up and downstream and then losing portions of them. So that's why I said Carl would be very intricate to that conversation is we can come up with whatever we want to do, but he may say, no, you can't do that because your water rights won't move. But we have some really good ideas. None of them are inexpensive.
Right.
Just like everything else we do. Still not as expensive as Terry.
Okay, thanks.
Cardiff Tank number two construction. We'd like to get that built next year so we have less of these problems that we're having this year and we've had for quite a few years. Design of Highland Tank number two. The Highlands area has one small water tank up there. It's two hundred and fifty thousand gallons, I believe. And during the day, during domestic use, they draw it down almost immediately. So there's almost no firewater in unless it's the middle of the night. So we'd like to get another tank up there. So if we did have fire issues or if we needed to maintain one tank, we could shut one off for a few weeks, maintain the other one. It's kind of have, nice to have two tanks. And that second tank would basically just be for firewater. And that's in the future. This is just the design of it. Install water line in Ninth Street between Colorado Pitkin. It's a looping line. It helps us. We found out when the school was built, we had some issues over there with some loops. Red Mountain South, where this is where the, the half a million shows up for water improvements out there. System improvements and your repairs yearly. We just kind of toss seventy five grand in because something always pops up where something explodes and we have to fix it. So we threw some money in twenty third Street Waterline Replacement Design Highway eighty two to Blake Avenue. This is where I'm saying where Blake Avenue kind of falls together with twenty third Street. We have some serious water issues. We've repaired it. That's stretched a line three times so far this year. So we'd like to at least get that designed. So in twenty twenty two, we can put budget together and get it built. Where twenty third Street would get rebuilt at the same time, probably. Twenty first Street Waterline Replacement to Blake Avenue from Blake to Bennett. We're doing a little bit of that water line this year in conjunction with a small subdivision project that's going up there, but the rest of it needs to be finished. Yearly field tell, tell, I can't even say it. Upgrades, replace pumps, repair, replace water treatment plant filter building, exterior insulation. That building needs to be repaired. And then because we don't know how the Blake Avenue thing is going to fall, we threw three hundred thousand dollars in for Blake Avenue Water Main Replacement. We can do sections of it without shutting people off if it's just sections of it. And we don't really need a design because we shut some valves off, pull out the line in between, put new line in and then help pay for some of the asphalt over top of it. So that's why it's kind of a big number. It's almost kind of a random number. We've got an idea of what that it means, but I don't know where it's going to fall into Blake Avenue. So that's kind of the projects underwater for twenty twenty one. Questions, hands up, no? Moving on to twenty one to eleven, it's water sewer administration. It's admin. It's part of the P I O. It's asset management. It's partly me, G I S, those kinds of fun things. We kind of help pay for everybody that supports us within the city directly through this. And then workers comp, all those fun things. Utilities for buildings, professional services. We have consultants that we work with every single year. That's paying for them. This is kind of the boring stuff. Interfund cost of transfer. Sustainable strategies falls in here also. We pay them, I, I think about a hundred thousand dollars a year. Basically, every year they pay for themselves quite easily with grant money coming in. The root of water, body nuisance program, Reynolds and Kane's ditch. We have fees we have to pay for ditch companies that we're part of. I asked for a B I W for some superintendent salary adjustments. You know, Brad, Brad left us and we've hired or promoted Mike Hoffman and Warren Hayes up into position to basically cover Brad and to help me out because I can't cover everything that Brad left for all of us. He was quite an asset to lose, but I'd, I'd like to put those two guys more in line with where their salary ranges really should be. So I'm asking for a little bit of money. Twenty four seems high, but a lot of that's health insurance, FICA, all the other stuff that's built into it. So it's a smaller number split between the two of them. Um, so it's a smaller number split between the two of them. Um. There's another interfund cost of service under, uh, water, interfund franchise fees. I mean, it's all kinds of fun stuff. Um, Steven Avett can probably explain better than I can. Depreciation. I always appreciate the depreciation line because I don't exactly know how it functions. I mean, I know that things depreciate, but. How it affects the budget, I don't, is a question. Uh, regular employees in the water treatment plant fall into here. We've got. Class, uh, one, uh, Ds, As, Bs, chief operator, those kinds of fun things. Um, chemicals for the plant, safety programs for the plant. I guess that I'm going to try to go through this fast. Uh, water transmission district, which is the guys who maintain the water lines. Um, this is where they fall into the world. Uh, maintenance and repair, river crossings, all those kinds of fun things we do every single year, uh, just to keep the system up and running. Sorry, with fire hydrant replacement program, we try to replace four or five fire hydrants every single year. We have some that are from the fifties. Uh, so we replace them, we keep them, uh, to keep the parts for the other ones that break that are from the fifties still. Uh, we pay for leak detection every single year. Uh, we try to do about a third of the city. Sometimes it's a half. Uh, we just have a guy that comes in and just, he can hook onto a fire hydrant and tell you if you have a leak within the system within the area and he can pin it down for you. Um. All right, let's go to the other fun thing. Projects is what everybody loves. Um, so for sewer projects for next year. Sewer rehabilitation program. That's what the money we spend on lining sewer lines. Uh, repairing small sections, doing rehab on manholes, um, all those kinds of fun things. It's just lumped into one big number, uh, every single year. We put off the Starbucks and Safeway sewer main replacement. This year we're transferring it to next year. Um, it's just a distraction, it's stretch of the, uh, the main line behind Starbucks there. We want to get in and get that replaced. Um, Red Mountain South, there's another half a million thrown in for that. Uh, system improvements is the same thing. It's seventy-five was water. Um, which is just the random things that pop up. Uh, wastewater treatment facility, headworks, hydrogen sulfide mitigation. That's a long name. Um, basically what it means is our headworks building that all the sewer comes into creates a lot of acidic gas. Um, and that gas off gases in the building, we try to evacuate it as quickly as possible, but it's starting to eat the building. Um, so we're going to do some mitigation next year. So we don't eat the building down to nothing and all the stuff inside of it. Um, dry and bed expansion or storage at farm. Um, we land apply all of our, um, bio solids on a couple of, uh, farm up in the Silt Mesa area. Um, we found this year, we put in a temporary kind of storage facility up there. We have found we can land apply much more bio solids if we don't. Try to store it all at the landfill and do it all at one time. We bring it up to the farm. And then we spread it from there. We have probably done twice as much bio solids this year as we did last year. Um, and a significantly shorter amount of time with less wear on the equipment. Um, covers for the clarifiers, um, out at the wastewater treatment facility. That's basically trying to keep. Um, algae growth to a minimum. There's actually literally covers that go on the clarifiers. Um, bio solids, truck bay recoding, uh, same thing. We're just trying to maintain our buildings. Uh, digester air balancer repair. It's, if you know what a digester is, it's. Um, just a thing we have going on with the blowers right now. So we're just trying to fix that. Um. And just a gearbox for the oxidation ditches. So that's kind of the project list. It's about one point two eight million dollars. When we get to the bottom of this, you'll see the interesting portion of it. Um, any questions on any of those? Can you still hear?
Yeah, I can still hear. Doesn't look like there's any questions.
Can you still hear me? Okay?
Yeah, it's much better now.
Um, standard things depreciation, interfunds, uh, health insurance, employees. This is the wastewater treatment guys. So these are the people that run the wastewater treatment plant. So in water wastewater, what people don't kind of understand is there's actually like. Um, collections, distribution, plant, plant, admin. There's five or six different divisions within this one fund, which is why it's so long. Uh, but everybody does different things. Um, the plant uses quite a bit of utilities. There's a lot of, uh, gas, water, electricity, those kinds of things. Um, so it's built into this utilities fund. And then standard plant supplies. Professional services, if you want to read them all, these are the people that we hire every year to do things for us. Same thing with maintenance and repair. It's a hundred and ten thousand dollars, but everything in here, we have to maintain and repair. And that's where it falls under. And that's for the plant itself. Um, we didn't put any travel in for this year. Um, organizational dues, we don't have any. We do have some professional development. We'll try to attend seminars, even if there's Zoom seminars. Um. Wastewater treatment, uh, so wastewater collections and transmission. That's the pipes in the ground. They collect all the wastewater. They go to the plants. And these are the four people that basically maintain all of that. And we do collections and distributions, kind of share workloads. They've been cross-trained both ways. Uh, most of them have, so we can help each other. Um, miscellaneous things, root control. Capital outlay. Sometimes we have to buy new steel plates, job site work lighting. When things break, we have to replace them. So we throw a number in to make sure we have money to do that. I mean, a lot of times you'll see they're split. So maybe you'll split shoring with water, uh, or whatever. So the fun number at the end of the day is this guy right here. So doing that, which is not a ton. You know, you saw the six point four million at the beginning. That's the budget. So basically we're a four million dollars over budget. Um, that's part of the reason we're doing a water wastewater rate study because we shouldn't be four million dollars over budget. Every year we should be able to do a certain amount of projects. Um, and still fall within the budget because we have a lot of projects to do. Um, but we don't have that right now. So basically the million dollars for the, uh, tank comes out of that. Because it comes out of system improvement fees. So we're really about three million dollars over budget. Um, at the end of this year, we should be in the realm of about six million dollars. Uh, six and a half, six million dollars or so in reserves. So we'll be basically burning through half of those next year. So it's going to be a constant theme. You saw that in the street tax. We did a project. We burned the reserves. Down to a point where we're like, okay, we can't go any lower than that. Um, bringing these reserves down to the potentially the three million dollar range is about as low as I would like to see them. Um, and it's probably even a little bit on uncomfortable range. So. Um. We always have lofty goals. We may not get through all these things. We didn't get through everything we were supposed to do this year. We won't get through everything we're supposed to do next year. Um, but we try to shoot for the, what we want to do. And if we don't, then we don't burn up as many reserves and things can move to twenty twenty-two. Um. So.
Matt, I got a, I got a couple of questions. Uh, Paula, then Shelley.
So Matt, I'm looking at this weight water wastewater fund and you said we have about three million in reserves and it says. Um, twenty-nine million, twenty million by the end of. Um, twenty twenty-one. Can you explain the three million versus the? What the sheet is showing or did I misunderstand you?
Steve may have to explain that one. I look at reserves as cash on hand.
Okay.
This is not cash on hand.
Okay.
You on? Can you explain that one?
If he's not on, I would imagine that's assets as well, which is probably the, uh, buildings, equipment, land.
Thank you, John.
Can you, can you guys not hear me?
I can hear you now. Okay. If you just, if you disagree with me, just pretend.
Uh, yeah, no, you're totally right, Jonathan. Hundred percent as always. No, you, yeah, what you're saying is correct. A lot of that. There is some of it's the cash in there, but you know, every time that we buy an asset or something that we capitalize it, you know, hits our books as an asset. Um, and this is, this type of accounting is just like a business, right? It's generally accepted accounting principles. Um, so, uh, that kind of stuff gets capitalized on our books. It's not really spendable cash, some of it. Uh, but it's still reserves. And Matt is right that every year, you know, we're almost always going to show. Um, an expenditure budget that's greater than our revenue budget. Uh, because every year we go into, we don't finish all the projects that we think we're going to get to in the year, you know, as. Things go along, we just don't always get to everything. So Tabor says at the end of the year that we can't just carry a project forward. We have to reappropriate those funds. So if we have a project in the budget like Twenty Second Street in our street tax fund that was there for a few years, if we don't do it this year. That's fine. The money just falls down to our reserves, but we have to reappropriate that money the following year. So it kind of looks like we have. Done the project twice, even though we didn't really. Does that make sense?
That does make sense. I'm just wondering if we can also see a page in the future that just goes as cash reserves that we just have that clarity.
Yeah, and that's a good idea.
That's available.
Yeah, sorry. That, that's a good idea, Paul. And we had, in fact, had intended to do that because we get ourselves in trouble sometimes like in the fleet fund. Where it shows, you know, we've got all this, all these reserves, but they're vehicles, right? You can't just go spend the money. So. Yeah, I think you're making a good point, Paul, and we will definitely make it a point to get cash. Um, in these reports, so you guys can see what's actual, actually spendable dollars.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we, if we can just get that broken into just like, I mean, it's a great balance sheet, but it's, it doesn't have enough detail. If we can have restricted cash, unrestricted cash and asset. Then I think that would be helpful because, you know, that thirty-six million dollars of fund balance. Like thirty-three of it is buildings and equipment, so.
Yeah, it's slightly, yeah, I'm glad this eve came on and it's, you know, at the end of twenty nineteen, I went through and. Steven Avett helped me a little bit, just to make sure I was right. I think we had six point nine million in water wastewater. You know, after the COVID adjustment we did, you guys saw from the scenarios on, uh, January, March, May, who we did. We were probably going to come down to about nine hundred thousand dollars. So we should be in the six million dollar range. You know, for four million and a deficit now, a million of that's going to be paid out of, um, the info, the system improvement fees. We're about a three million dollars. That's where I get that three million left over. It's basically six minus three. It'll probably be by the end, it'll be six minus two because we won't get a million dollars worth of stuff done. Um, but like I said, we have so many things to do. We try to, without killing staff. Um, get everything we can done in one year, uh, but it doesn't always happen because COVID, you know.
Rick had a question.
I don't know that this is a question as much as just a comment. Um, twenty nineteen ending balance thirty-six million. Twenty twenty, twenty-nine point six million and projected twenty point eight. And, you know, that's pretty steep decline. And so. I think we really need to engage our community in understanding that. Like the street tax, um, this stuff doesn't just happen and that there's a real cost to. Running down your available reserves each year.
Correct.
Thanks, Rick.
If three million puts us at about a fifty percent because we run it about six point four million dollars, so we're about fifty percent of our operating fees. You know, but we have some significant structures that if they fail, that are going to cost us a lot of money like, you know. Fifteen hundred feet of basically raw water line. Um, and it's how we get water to our system. So. We want to keep that as high as we possibly can, just for those unknowns. Um, we have added as many things as we possibly can to our insurance list. Um, but they only cover for certain things. So we're, we're trying to balance everything out. So we're not keeping too much in reserves, but same time we're not. Keeping not enough in reserves. More water wastewater discussion? You want to move on?
I'm good with moving on. Everybody else good? Thumbs up?
As Steve said, this is the Matt Show. Um. So we'll move into electric utilities. Um, this is a little bit longer balance sheet here. So reserve, or revenue for electric is service connection fees. Um, charges for electricity from commercial, residential, municipal, all those fun things. So basically the budget for the electric looks spectacular because it's sixteen million dollars. Um, but when you start going through costs, you'll, you'll see at the end of the day where that one ends up at. Um, but those are always the two fun numbers. What's the budget? And what is the cost at the end of the year? So electric projects for next year, you guys all know about the, um, electric operations center that we would like to build next year. We. Kick that thing off yesterday with an onsite meeting with everybody. Um, have great hopes that we can get that done and get it done in a good timeframe and with the budget we were projecting for. Uh, but seventy-five thousand, we always put in there for system upgrades. It's kind of a carryover. Uh, every single year, and that's new poles, new lines, anything that kind of we see as failing. Um, that we weren't anticipating, uh, we have that money in reserve, ready to go. Um, hundred fifty thousand dollars for North Glenwood substation reclosures. Uh, we're changing all of our, uh, hydraulic reclosures over to electric. Um, just trying to get ahead of the times or at least catch up to the times. Um, those things are quite expensive. We did the roaring. We're doing the Roaring Fork this year. Um, and then we'll do North Glen and then we'll do Mitchell Creek. Uh, Red Mountain South, I don't see a whole lot of work for them in Red Mountain South. They might have to move a couple of transformers here and there, but that system's already been upgraded. Um, electric operations center. Uh, Cardinal Substation to the Meadows. So what this is, is once we get the Cardinal Substation up and actually energized. We have to be able to get the power from there over to a vault, which is basically a Wolfson and Midland. Um, this is the wire to do that and a little bit of conduit. There's a, I'm going to say two hundred foot section or so that we don't have conduit in for yet. But this is the money to accommodate that actual connection back to the city infrastructure. Um, pole inspections. We haven't done pole inspections for five or six years. Uh, basically somebody comes out. Tests all of our poles, tells us which ones we need to replace, and then we use part of that seventy-five thousand dollars to replace the ones that are really bad. Um, Roaring Fork Marketplace cable replacement. That's exactly what it sounds like. We're going to pull new cable in at the Roaring Fork Marketplace, which is a section of Blake Street. Um, two or three years ago, we had a cable failure. It's in my office where the cable actually failed and blew out the side of the cable. It's old cable. It needs to be replaced. Um. Tower removal. These are the three, one, two, three, four big green towers, uh, one by Amtrak, two by the pool and one by our substation. Um, once we go underground, uh, basically this year and in the next year, and, uh, we can take those towers down and all those cables. Uh, so we don't have any overhead there anymore. And then Card, Cardinal Substation carryover. I don't think that Excel and Piesco, same thing. Um, are going to get their act together fast enough to get us our interconnect in twenty twenty between the substation and their line about a hundred feet away. Um, we've been working with them for a year and a half now. And we finally just have an agreement that I think we're all okay with. Um, once that's signed. Um, then we'll, they'll actually start design and get the thing moving forward. But I mean, it could be six to twelve months before they have us interconnected. So. We're just transferring from that two point five we asked for this year, removing seven hundred thousand of it to next year. Um, if a miracle happens and we spend it this year, then this line item will go away. I do not anticipate though. Um, this is twenty twenty is electric admin. Electric's basically twenty twenty and three eighty. Um, so this is a P I O, asset management support, me and the G I S administrator. Um, all people that help us, uh, do what we do. Um, utilities for buildings, um, construction management. We have that built in. Um, so that we can have the guys, uh, our contractor help us build the, uh, substation. And for the building. Because if it gets up and going next year, like we're hoping to, we'll have to hire somebody to help us run that thing because we're not all experts and we don't all have time on that. Um, sustainable strategies isn't here. Um, but basically from projects all the way through. Electric admin, which is purchase power also. You can see, you know, we're at ten point nine million. Um, remember the sixteen million dollar budget. Um, regular employees, this is the meter, uh, customer accounts employees. This is a, uh, assistant meter tech, electric meter. Um, and everything that they do. Interfund cost of building is right there. Um. Capital outlay, replacement of meter test board, best to standard piece of equipment we have to replace and we're going to buy another trailer. Um. Oh, we're going to reclass a meter apprentice to a meter tech. So they're going to get a slight budget or a bump in pay. Depreciations, almost a million dollars on the system. Um, this is where most everybody lives. This is where Doug lives and all our linemen lives under maintenance and distribution. You can see it's quite a large staffing number. Um, we do pay our, uh, linemen's apprentice and crew leaders and everybody fairly well. Because if we don't, then they go to Holy Cross. So we have to keep up with salaries, um, because we've even lose them to Holy Cross when we're paying them well. Uh, because they pay them slightly better. Um. Generator testing, maintenance and repair. If you guys see something you want to talk about, let me know. Routine maintenance, uh, it's meters, service maintenance. You can see on your street lights, tree trimming is a big one. There's only one company that will actually trim trees around our electric lines for us. Um, and they're not inexpensive. Um, B I W personnel, we're going to reclass an apprentice to a journeyman. He's going to get a decent bump in pay. We're just trying to make sure that's included. Um, salary progressions with, uh, three with complete. Salary progressions with three with completions of apprentice schedules. So our apprentices have a four year program they're on. Every time they make it from one year to the next, they get a slight bump in pay. And Doug's just accounted for that in here. Broadband currently lives in this fund. Steve can talk about that a little bit later. But basically broadband customer employees, costs, everything. They're about seven hundred sixty one thousand dollars, but you'll see in the revenue, if you go back up top, they bring in about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So. This one's kind of a wash, whether it lives here or if it gets broken out as its own enterprise fund, it's kind of a wash. But I guess the number here at the bottom, just like every other number, is about three million dollars higher than the revenues associated with it. Let me flip to another screen here. You don't need to see it. So in electric, quantifying everything, about six point two four million dollars in here. At the beginning or at the end of twenty nineteen. But with the covid spreadsheet. Like I said, I only have two screens, so I got to keep opening it up along. Under electric. If you remember that conversation, net impact reserves was going to be about seven hundred thousand dollars. The net impact reserves this year is probably going to be about nothing because we're transferring seven hundred thousand dollars in next year. So we'll have about that six million. We're going to eat into that about three. But once again, we'll have about three million dollars with reserves. Associated with the end of twenty twenty one. That one's less comfortable for me because it's a sixteen million dollar budget. So we're only sitting at about what twenty twenty two percent? Instead of fifty percent of annual revenue. So. It's still not terrible, but it's not quite as happy as I'd like to be. But the nice thing is is once the Cardinal Station's done. The towers are down, the interconnects are done to the city. We have a new building. We're looking pretty good on major infrastructure projects for electric. We'll even have reclosures all done. Basically by the end of the year. So we'll be able to continue to bill, do less projects that are two million dollars at a time. And start building those reserves back up fairly quickly. Anybody have electric conversations? This is also kind of.
We do have a question from Shelley, Matt.
Go ahead, Shelley.
That was my main question was it it seems to be just going on past memory that general the electric fund pays for itself. So I'm just curious is is it we've got two years now in a row where we're going to be. Exceeding the revenues quite a bit. Am I reading that right? And is that? Because of the new building going in and. Share of what it was this year.
So the fourth substation, we budgeted two point five million dollars for this year.
Okay.
So yes, it's the substation in the new building. The substation, if you look at the ESC reports we have, we have a five year plan put together for us for our system. Every four years, so we can start on the next five years after that. And that substation was a recommendation, I think, two or three years ago. Might have been, yeah, it might have been three years. I'm done.
I lost you. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, Matt. Your your thing went crazy. I saw Rick freak out. My ears were getting loud, so I muted you for a sec. You came back on. You're you're better now. It just got a little fuzzy there for a sec. So if. Did everyone else hear that? Like make it really loud for about two seconds?
Yep.
Okay, so I just muted you, Matt, and now you're better.
My computer is crazy. Alyssa's replacing it. Thank you, Alyssa. Yes, so we have two point five million dollar project this year, which eats into those reserves a little bit, but the reserves are there to do these big projects and not have to finance them.
Okay.
Great that we have the money to do that and not have to pay somebody to borrow the money and pay it back over twenty years. The electric building was really an unanticipated thing. I mean, the M O C was something we were hoping we could limp along. But obviously, we limped it as far as we could. So them having to build a building was kind of unanticipated, but it's not so bad that it's bringing our reserves down to a point where I'm like, we can't do that.
Okay, okay.
Three million is good. That could definitely get us through quite a bit of a disaster. And insurance definitely helps too, because we went back and looked at everything SIRSA covers, and we realized they were missing things that they should have been covering. So we've been trying to do a really good job. Catherine and I and everybody have been trying to really do a good job of making sure what we need covered is actually on that list.
Okay, great. Another question is on the energy efficiency programs. Is that I understand those were kind of cut out? Or the the rebates to customers were cut for this year? Are those going to be reinstated for next year?
Yes, so we have the full two hundred and ten thousand dollars. I think it is budgeted for next year for that. And I'm not even saying by the end of this year, we won't go back and pay those. Because what we were doing is basically, you know, we were looking at covid, just going, how bad could this be for us all?
Right, right.
I've been tracking electric water wastewater in landfill, which is the kind of the three big ones that covid could hit. And I'm just waiting for it to pop back up. I don't know why it closed. Electric was down one point four percent for the year through June. Yeah, one point four percent based on last year, which was once again, a really good year for us. I'm sorry, they're down point five eight percent. That was water. They're only down to half a percent.
Okay, so that's my last question is on the, and I guess it relates to water and electric. How are we handling people who can't pay their bills right now because they're unemployed or they're impacted by covid? And do we have? A lot of that? What's the impact? And, you know, are there are their payments being deferred or are they being forgiven and kind of what's that look like right now?
Steve, you want to handle that one? He's on the phone. He doesn't want to handle that one. So.
He might have trouble being heard again.
That's okay.
There he is. Trying to talk. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. So no, we do have some people that have fallen behind. I mean, that I guess is to be expected. We're not shutting anybody off. You know, we're not going out and turning their water electric off and. And, you know, if somebody calls us and says, look, I'm in trouble. I can't get this paid or whatever, we'll always work with them. And see if we can work something out with them to get them kind of back on track. So it does happen sometimes. We haven't really seen too much of that, at least so far. We're not really forgiving any unpaid bills, but we are working with people if something comes up and they need some help. And we're happy to waive penalties for them and that kind of stuff if if they just communicate with us.
Okay, I was just wondering if there's documented. A big covid impact to their employment and their life and they're in a crisis situation. If we have a way to. Either forgive that or we could use CARES funding, maybe to cover some of their utility bills or just wanted to explore that option.
Yeah, and I mean, I think that makes sense. We haven't really had that request at this point, but I do think that what you're saying has some validity. If somebody is really saying, look, I've got a covid specific issue. That I can't get past, you know, I need some help with it. You know, I think that's something that we would probably bring to council and see what you guys would like to direct us to do there. It just it hasn't been something that's come up.
So it'd be great to know. Yeah, if it if it comes up and it's an issue, what the scale of it is and that kind of thing.
And I know.
Sure.
And Rick, Rick has his hand up too, but I do know to that point, Shelley, that there's organizations like Catholic Charities. And a few other organizations do. Utility assistance. So, you know, it might be, and they do, they prequalify people. So, you know, it's not people just coming to us and then we have staff time and and trying to figure out. Are they really needy or or what's the deal? So, you know, it'd be interesting to find out, Steve Boyd, what like Holy Cross does or Excel or other neighboring agencies. So. I think it's a great idea, Shelley, though.
Okay. I just thought, yeah, as a CARES funding, if we need it.
Sure. Rick, my friend, you have your hand up.
Just a quick question. And by the way, if you want to unmute yourself. You don't have to click. You can just hold down your spacebar key and that works pretty good. Just get the wonders of technology. So back to the broadband for just a second, Matt. Are you thinking that we're all staffed up for what's coming for twenty twenty one and as we? Do the rollout, the expansion? Okay, can you talk about that a little bit, please?
So we've hired two additional staff for this. Four staff now. Basically, we have an outside plant guy. We have. Chris is a kind of a do everything kind of guy. Michael, obviously, and Steven. So right now we're good. As we build out this year, we were probably going to hit a point where we'll have to hire on a accounts rep. Which is basically the person that answers the phone, sets up accounts, help people with random things. Because we have had a whole load of interest in people bugging us when we're going to be at their front door. Which is spectacular. That's amazing. That's really great. And obviously, we need that to happen to accommodate for the coverage of this thing. So no, we're not totally staffed up. We're staffed up where we need to be right now, but I can see at the end of the year, we'll probably need another staff member. And think that's why, you know. Broadband is probably going to get at some point broken out into its own enterprise fund. So that it's not living within electric. It's kind of its own standalone thing. And operates as a business as it should. I don't know if Steve wants to chime in on that. And when that can happen.
Yeah, so we're planning to do that on January first, two thousand and twenty one. You know, and talking to our otters and stuff, it's a little bit hard to kick off a whole new fund like that in the middle of a year. So on the first day of twenty twenty one, that will get broken out just like water, just like electric, just like landfill does its own standalone standalone enterprise fund.
Hey, that's great. Just just one more quick question. Which are the two new people that are listed there? Is that the plant technician and the systems technician? I won't hold you to this. I'm just kind of curious.
So the plant technician and then the commercial account rep marketing. So the superintendent, obviously, is Michael. The system technician is our Steven. He's been here for quite a while. But the new plant technician or fiber plant technician, his name is Jared. I mean, our new commercial account rep marketing is Chris. And Chris has been reaching out to basically everybody at this point. You know, we're trying to drive interest. As we move in, because we've started construction at this point with lightworks and we've already got our first load of fiber in. We're moving forward as quickly as possible. But people are always asking, including Deborah, so when can I tell people that we're going to be at their front door? Soon, we'll be able to probably define that better. You know, as Cedar Crest gets built out, then we'll start to move into that location, but we need to get a new trunk line over there kind of thing. So. Everything kind of has to mesh together before we can turn up a whole entire area. They're working on Park East right now. I'm sure they've they've been door hanging out there. As we move into the area, people will get door hangers put on their doors so that they know why there's a whole bunch of guys running around. And so that we can do a little marketing and say, hey, we're coming your way.
Just on that question, real quick, Matt, I you said door hangers going up the park east. I was. I remember from earlier conversations that Park West would be the first one to go. Okay, I just. I wanted to clarify that.
I was in Park East this morning, so.
That's that's fine. Not going to hold you to it. I don't really care. I'm just passionate about the whole thing, but just want to make sure consistent with the messaging. All right, Deborah, you have a question or a comment?
A snarky comment. I just wanted to say I think it's wholly unfair that Jonathan will get broadband before me.
And that is not a snarky comment, and that's not fair at all because actually. Steve Boyd really does the the moving and shaking, and I believe is Matt Langhorne's direct supervisor, Steve Boyd, or he's report directly to you, Deborah?
I don't know.
Okay, well, I'm pretty sure Park West is getting it because of Steve Boyd, not because Jonathan goes. No, you know what? In all honesty, people are really, really excited. I talk to my neighbors all the time and they're like, when is this coming? When is this coming? It's fifty five days from now, end of September. I told people to hang out, but I think the community is really excited about that. So, you know. Thank you, guys. It's 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 great that it's coming in sooner than than I would have thought. I mean, we passed that like nine months ago. We said, yep, let's go ahead and do this. And to have the first customers coming online in the next couple of months is is pretty pretty impressive.
It's it's been a lot of work and Michael and the team have been doing a really great job. It's just, we just got to keep going and keep pushing ahead and getting it done. And I think Cottonwood Landing is last on the list. I think that's what I heard.
We are occasionally difficult.
No comment. So that's electric. Does anybody have any questions about electric? Yeah, there's big numbers and these aren't reality. Those are also infrastructure, so. Because when we want to landfill, I think that's my last one. I don't even know anymore. Landfill Enterprise Funds, obviously, first page is service fees miscellaneous interest, those kinds of things. So we're just projecting the landfill straight across again this year. No increase, no decrease. So far this year through June, we are down about seven percent, which is about two hundred thousand dollars. We're anticipating that to come back up and catch up a little bit. But we'll probably be down a little bit by the end of the year. We did close the landfill for a month and a half, basically. So we were anticipating we'd be down a little bit. With the covid projections, the cut scenarios. I think there was like a two hundred or two thousand dollar reduction to the rep or the. Reserves. Not that we have a boatload of reserves at the landfill at this point. But we have enough to kind of get us through at this moment. So. Two point eight million dollars is what we're projecting for revenue, going through the standard things. There are very few projects at the landfill. This year, we're building the compost lagoon. We're going to get the new compost area up and running. Expand that capability. That's this year's big project. We had budgeted a half a million. I think that was like three hundred thousand, three fifty to get that done. So next year's project is pond construction. We've got some old. Septage ponds that we have right now that don't really meet requirements for CD P H E. The liners are failing and a few other things. And if we had bigger ponds, we could actually take more liquids in and create more revenue. Sometimes we do have to turn people away and they have to go to Garfield County. Depending on what our capabilities are at that moment. So we already have a bid in for the pond, so we know what it is cost wise. We'd like to get the ponds done next year. The scale house, the scales on its last legs, we need to get that rebuilt next year. And then the last piece of equipment, we kind of keep chipping away at equipment over the last duration of time. Was we need one more front end loader up there, and that's basically for the compost operation. We'll have one person that'll run the compost operation. He'll have his own piece of equipment, two pieces of equipment. And his own new lagoon and his whole goal is to recycle everything we possibly can in the compost. And create compost to sell to the community. It's actually fairly amazing how many people don't know that we make compost. So we're going to use Hannah a little bit and do a little PIO on that one. And start getting more information out there so that people start coming up and actually getting compost. We have sold quite a bit this year so far. So small projects, I mean, they're big projects, but there's only two of them, basically. And this is kind of like electric. I'm not telling King what to do, but he may retire at the end of this this twenty twenty one, but he wants to leave the landfill in as best a place as he possibly can. If we have compost up and running, we have a great crew. We have a new cell we opened up. We get the ponds done. Basically, he and I both don't see any major, major projects coming up for the next five to eight years. Other than maintaining the ponds and those kinds of fun things. So it's kind of like electric. We're going to take one more kind of hit. To not adding to the reserves. We're just kind of spending the budget to get projects done. But in twenty twenty two, I'm not even sure which project we'll do. Even if we'll have any major projects at that point. So. That money would then start going into reserves. We can build reserves back up. We have a lot of people out there, recycled texts, accounting, D, a lot of landfill operators, equipment operators. We pay for part of the PIO. Nigel's the crew lead and obviously King is the superintendent. Down at the bottom, you'll see a BIW here in a minute. I think I got it in here. Part time employees. Overtime, standard workers comp, that kind of fun stuff. Maintenance and repair. We have a lot of heavy equipment up there. It takes quite a bit of money to keep that stuff up and running. It's not in the most friendly environment. Engineering services, we also almost always every year spend about a hundred thousand dollars in engineering services. The one thing we will be doing next year out of engineering services is we need to change the CD boundary on the property. So we'll have to get all that paperwork done, bring it to the county. They'll let us most likely do what we want to do. And then that'll go to CD P H E and we'll actually be setting up the landfill with a new CD boundary for the very long term future. So. We have areas right now. We're pushing up against the boundary and we don't have to. It just has never been adjusted. Rental and lease equipment. We rent a grinder, a screener, a crusher. All those kinds of fun things to take all that furniture and make it into a pile. and make it into a pile of uh, wood, um, to take the concrete and break it down to one and a half inch to three inch material. And the reason we rent these things is we don't need them every day. And one grinder is $750,000. And that's not a crusher. That's not a screener. If we bought all this stuff, it'd be in the realm of $2 million. So every year we rent it. Um, and it basically pays for itself by the products that come in. Someday we may buy some equipment, but it'll be, that'll be a slow process. Um, recycling program, it costs us about $90,000 a year. It's not too bad. That's hauling, that's uh, disposal, that's kind of fun things. Uh, depreciation's not too big. Um, here's the BIW. So the last three or four months of the year, if King decides that he does want to retire at the end of 2021, I need to hire somebody as an assistant landfill superintendent to learn what King knows. Um, so instead of just trying to replace King after he's gone, I'd really like to advertise for that position as an assistant superintendent with the intent that that person would take over the job. Um, so we don't have any of that historic knowledge lost. Um, there are very detailed reports that have to be done, permitting, testing, all these kinds of fun things that have to be done in very specific orders. And I don't want to lose that. So basically for the last third of the year, we'd be hiring somebody to learn King, what King does every single day, because I can't even tell you what he does every day. So at the end of the year, we're at about 2.997. So that's about $200,000 over budget um, to accomplish everything that we're trying to accomplish next year. Um, reserves, that's not exactly the right number. We have, as far as I can tell, between three and $400,000 reserves. Stephen, a vet can correct me on that. Um, but we have enough money to do it. And then we're kind of in a really good place with the landfill with potentially a new superintendent, ponds, lagoons, compost, everything set up. Um, and then the years after that, we'll start raking in kind of that four to $500,000 a year and start building those reserves back up. Any comment on that, Steve?
No, you're basically right. The post-closure costs um, are restricted reserves that we've got. Um, so those available reserves represent um, you know, everything that is cash in the landfill and whatever other assets that we've got out there. So again, I mean, to Paula's earlier point, we'll break out the cash so that it's easier to see, you know, what's really spendable uh, funds in that reserve. But I, I will say that in the three and a half years or so that I've been here, you know, what these guys have done at the landfill is one of the more impressive things that I, I think I've witnessed here. You know, if you go up there, it's friendly, it's clean, it passed inspection by the state. I think with a perfect score for the first time ever, and they're saving something like 1.3 million dollars a year. I mean, they have saved that landfill and just to watch, you know, Matt and King and Nigel and those guys kind of make their plan and then go execute it has really been sort of impressive. So when you see King uh, on the street, tell him good job.
Yes, please do. He's done a great job.
And I got to follow up with that, with the, you know, when I first got here, this was one of the scariest funds we had. Like, I mean, it was going towards having no money. So Matt, King, you guys have done a tremendous job and counsel, thank you so much for trusting us to get it done.
Yes, great job.
Charlie has a question.
I'm more of a comment than a question. For the first comment is King Lloyd and I started together at the city back in the early eighties. He was city engineer, a city attorney. He can't retire till I retire, so that won't be happening. Second comment, uh, and no, it actually, I want to, what everybody else says, it, it's done a phenomenal job. Matt, King, Deborah, staff has done a great job and great decision, previous council to bring that in-house. And the last thing I just want to say is, Matt, I went through this with you with FAB in here. This was much better presentation, a lot quicker. But it's a tremendous amount of work in here and you and Steve and Evette putting this together. I want to thank you guys. It's really good summary and really helps everybody understand what's, what we're doing with our five years. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I, I want to, you know, it's always a good shout out for my superintendents. They, they helped me put this together. They put a lot of it together. We sit down and talk about it, make sure we're all on the same page, but they do a lot of work on this too. So you know, all those guys have done a great job.
All right. Any other questions for Matt? I, I also want to say, you know, I think every year we get recommendations from the financial advisory board on, on the budget. And every year in the memo, it says, please don't raid funds to pay for other priorities. And a lot of times is this council, not this council, but, but other councils and councils in the past have. And so I think it's really incumbent as we see the reserves of electrical and water. Um, and yes, landfills recovering, but, but we have pretty darn minimal reserves in all of our enterprise funds. And COVID has thrown a, a big hitch into a lot of our lives and, and obviously our city's budget. So I guess I would just um, caution and encourage everybody to heed the financial advisory board's uh, words of advice when they say, please don't raid these funds because those funds actually need them. And every year we, we have more money budgeted to expend than we do to come in. So that's my soapbox. Um, anything else, Matt? Are you doing marijuana tax too, or is that someone else?
No. Steve, you want me just to scroll through these or you want the screen?
Turn your screen and I'll see if I can take it over and, and we'll finish up here. Uh, okay. Um, okay, can you guys see my screen now?
Yes, we can, Steve.
Okay. So we, we don't need to spend too much time on these last couple of things. I know that we're sort of over time already and we need to, you know, get some dinner, take a break or whatever. This is our marijuana tax fund. Um, uh, what we see happening in this fund is that the money comes in that we uh, tax our marijuana retailers with. We transfer that money out basically to cover the cost of enforcement, um, you know, youth education and prevention and that kind of stuff. So in the 2021 budget, what we see, Eric can scroll, just show you guys the revenues. But what we see coming into the marijuana tax fund is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $295,000. And we're expecting that most of that will just get transferred out into uh, you know, the general fund to offset fire and police and, and public safety. As a result of that, we generally don't need to carry much of a uh, uh, fund balance in the marijuana tax fund. We did leave a little bit in there, um, you know, just in case we've got, you know, a, a sort of a local participation to a regional, um, you know, rehabilitation center of some kind. Um, so we kept a little bit of, of reserve in for that. But that's a pretty simple fund. Um, the tobacco tax fund is brand new. This is the first year that we've got it. So our, uh, we don't even have a fund um, set up in our budget for it yet, but we will next year. Um, the fund balance that we've got, you know, kind of forecasted by the end of 2020 is $50,000. All the revenue that we get from it, we're transferring again into the uh, general fund to offset the cost of, you know, prevention and, and um, and that kind of stuff. So in 2021, we see kind of the same thing happen. We'll leave a little bit in reserves for, you know, rehab center or anything else that might come up. But mostly this is just a pass-through fund that is uh, uh, occurring for us. Um, because we didn't have a budget from last year, I sort of put what our forecasts are this year in 2020. Uh, we forecast about $800,000 in revenue. And then in 2021, we've got a forecast of about $900,000 in there. It's been a little bit surprising how resilient tobacco sales have been. I mean, when we put that tax on, $4.40% a pack, basically doubled the price of, of cigarettes here locally. Um, but sort of surprisingly, sales have held up pretty strong. Um, any questions anybody's got about marijuana tax or tobacco tax funds?
Shelley does, and then Paula does.
Um, hi Steve, thanks for that. Can we please get a detailed breakdown on where that money goes? When it hits the general fund and what it's being spent on? It's um, I know with the marijuana tax, I'm, I'm interested if we're continuing the youth uh, activities that we were funding there. And, and um, just wondering if there's added expenses. I know with mental health and uh, detox, things like that, that are, might be increasing needs because of the COVID crisis and how we might be addressing those. So if we could get a detailed breakdown of how that money's being spent, uh, that would be great. Next.
Sure. And you're absolutely right. We are continuing with the youth education stuff that we do. We've got $75,000 in the budget that, you know, we contribute to uh, the schools for mental health and counseling, that kind of stuff. And when we get to our general fund in the first meeting in September, we'll kind of go through all of that. So you can see what's uh, what's happening there.
Okay, great. All right, thanks.
Yep.
Paula, go ahead.
Um, Steve, when we say we're transferring this general fund, is this temporary COVID? Or is this kind of how the process is going to go every year?
Well, I mean, that's a good question. Yeah. And I don't know if I know the answer to that entirely yet. Um, certainly COVID this year did play into that a little bit. Um, you know, we need every dollar of the general fund that we can get. Having said that, we always need every dollar in the general fund that we can get. Uh, but that really, the general fund is where we pay people and the people are, you know, kind of where we incur the cost associated with enforcement and prevention and that kind of stuff. So I, I guess the, the way I'll try to answer that question best is that, yeah, COVID probably does have a little bit of, of uh, influence in the urgency of transferring that money into the general fund this year. But in general, just like we've seen in the past few years with the marijuana tax fund, that generally is what we see happening with those proceeds uh, from those taxes. They, they will, most of them will get transferred into the general fund for those purposes.
Well, I ask that because um, I get questions about is, is there going to be opportunities for people who provide mental health services and those type of stuff to get to access some of those funds through grants and that type of thing? So I didn't know if that was set up in this. I do know that we, when we passed the tobacco tax fund, we spoke to that particular issue when we put it to the voters.
Yeah. And I think that funds will be and should be available for uh, some of that uh, kind of grant, those grant purposes and stuff. That's a decision council is going to have to make. Um, you know, in 2021, you know, the COVID thing does kind of, I think, preclude that a little bit. Um, but in future years, you know, assuming we can find a way to balance the general fund, yeah, I mean, I, I certainly think that um, you know, council can um, consider granting some of those funds out for mental health and, and whatever else might come up.
If I could, I can tell you what I was hoping we were going, you know, pre-COVID, what I was hoping we were going to be able to present to you for the tobacco tax fund, which was like a 30, 30, like 33, 33, 33 split where, you know, we were working regionally in the Roaring Fork Valley to put together a really robust mental health plan with the school district in each school, all the schools in the Roaring Fork Valley to try to really assist the school district with mental health. And you know, also for um, our detox center, like a third of it. And then also to the general fund, like a third of it. And of course, you guys have the ultimate authority on how those funds get split. But that is what we truly wanted to do. You know, that being said, COVID hit. Right now, we're trying to figure out how to keep our firefighters and policemen and so are, you know, all other cities essentially in the Roaring Fork Valley specifically. You know, Aspen is struggling, like we're struggling. Passau, not so much because most of their um, economy is based on retail sales, you know, Whole Foods. So I would definitely like to get back to that when we can. I know mental health for our kids is so credit. I mean, it was such a huge issue before COVID hit and our detox is a huge issue too. So know that we don't, I don't make this recommendation with Steve lightly. We're just in crisis mode as a city.
I understand that. I just was curious long-term kind of what the outlook was. Thanks.
Okay. And so the only other fund that we've got on here is our victims. What is it? Victims Advocates Law Enforcement Fund, I think. So we get a little bit of money, about $25,000 or so um, that comes in. Uh, we may earn a little bit of interest in the account um, over next year. And then we basically just kind of roll that money out. Uh, we have a bail board that meets on, once a month on Monday mornings. Um, and they're really the, the stewards of, of this fund. So there's really not much that happens in this fund. I just wanted to kind of include it so that we got it checked off the list. Um, and so with that, I mean, we are a little bit over time, so I apologize for that. I know we've got to start up in a few minutes with our regular session. Uh, but does anybody else have any other questions or comments, issues they want to talk about before we sign off?
No? All right. Well, thank you very much. Uh, mostly Matt, somewhat Steve. And uh, let's, can we get back on at 6:05? Does that give uh, everybody enough time to grab dinner and listen to, to get us all set up? Okay. So we'll see you back here at 6:05.
Thank you, everybody. Like here.
Hey Siri. Set alarm for 6:05.